We will call the Pownell Select Board regular monthly meeting Thursday, October 17th, 2013 for the agenda approval, approval of minutes 10:10:13. Warrants, mail, old business, timber harvest status. Mike Batch, BCRC, RE Hazard Molestation Plan. And under new business, Mike again with BCRC, changes to flood insurance law.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes 10:10:13.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, before we go to warrants, just for I get this off my head so I don't forget, 31st is Halloween. Do we wanna make a decision not to have a meeting that? That's our fifth floater.
Yeah, I did, two weeks ago.
That we weren't gonna have it? Well, I wasn't sure.
I don't remember.
I'm sure it was in my notes.
I don't remember.
No, I didn't either.
But it sounds good because we've been having on all these other ones too.
Yeah, we've been meeting Tuesday, so.
I'd pass out candy that day anyway.
Alright, so is that Mike's motion on it? You a second on it?
Second.
Alright, so we're all in favor of that?
Yes.
Okay, so if it's not in the minutes, Linda, it can be. Okay, that's the 31st meeting. Okay, with that, now we can continue with warrants. Thank you. Payroll, 10:13:13 to 10:18:13, any amount of $48.31, $94. This one's a little more strenuous. Accounts payable, any amount of $113,349.42. With that, some of your larger items. Environmental Service is $32.96. You've got Casella, $18.14. Gomer and Brothers for Calcium Monroe Department at $29.40. Waste Management through TAM, $24.11. The Boninino Group for Audit Services at $76.44. And you got Sewer Bond Payment, US Bank, that's your biggie of $86.847, $89. So that's just two of your large ones to come up with that. Particular figure. Those are your warrants. Questions, suggestions, or motions?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This email. We have an active recreation study on Burrington Road.
Who's that from?
BCRC.
Okay.
It's basically saying some of the things could be happening to this road for the scenic byway, for bicycle path, walking, et cetera. Some of the work that needs to possibly be done. Guardrails, pull-offs, different proposed projects to make this a little better.
Can't be state-funded?
Well, that's what I was kinda getting to. There's several different areas of the funding on that. And unfortunately, the ones that would apply to work for us aren't funded. So, you've got transportation alternatives. Can't be used for repaving, or guardrails, or culvert projects. So that's not a good match for the road. Scenic Byway Program. This, to me, is the one that fits the particular circumstance. Is designated as scenic byway as part of the Shears of Vermont. Scenic Byway Burrington Road is within the byway corridor and eligible for grants that improve its visitors' experience along the byway. The new federal transportation bill, MAP-21, eliminated fundings for the byway program. So unless Congress changes that, that one's out. And that's the only one that really kind of applies. Scenic Road Destination. It can be designed or discontinued as a town scenic highway by the Select Board after a public hearing. If the road becomes a scenic highway, it may be eligible for special funding, but the town may then have to meet certain standards set by the transportation. So, my thought is scenic byway program too is what I thought was the best in looking at it, but.
Do you mind if I ask our state rep here a question or two, Phil?
Nope. We're on that, it's.
Where does the, where does the state fit into this for any type of help with the federal government?
I'm not 100% sure about all of the cash flows and the pockets they come from and be corrected, but I think a lot of that is federal money that the state manages. But I know that's not the only way or that one could address it. I think every year you get the information on applying for transportation enhancement monies, which is a separate program, but related. That's another form of dollars that could go there. There also are the community building recreation grants that are $25,000. And that could be, there are ways of chipping away at it. And often, if you work on those things, I know that perhaps the main interest you have is the surface, basically treatment for cars, I think is probably your main interest. But perhaps, if you wanted to think of it as what are the opportunities here, it might be by pursuing some of the other approaches, you could bring cars along.
Yeah. Cause you get, go ahead.
As a way of going about it.
Can those monies be used together? In other words, should you?
Can you match one with another?
Right.
Yes. One would have to read that very carefully. And I mean, that's the place where I would say I would really want an expert on how you would design a strategy. It occurs to me, if there's a deep town interest, is that that particular road is the kinda asset you talk about, cause so many people do walk it, do ride it, do so, is that any planning for on it or for it would basically include how we resource, you know, what we think is the prudent thing to do that could be sustained? And where would the dollars come from? And what would the local fair be? What would the others? And I think you would wanna commit to really asking for the next step in whatever kind of study this is. This looks like it's scoping, in a way.
This is, I don't know how much you read into this rich house here a little earlier, so I did get to read more. There's some interesting approaches here because they've got some informal pull-outs and they're marking several different places for overview lookouts, some guardrail work. So there's different areas, like Bill was saying, of resources of getting certain things for different areas of it that would fit back into this.
And does anybody here know, Casey's not here, he would probably know, but how many miles is that total road?
Two.
Two?
That's what I would guess. It's, we could probably look right up there.
It's in here. It's on.
1.95.
I'm sorry?
1.95.
Okay, so.
For instance, in those transportation, a lot of people talked about losing views around here. There are dollars actually that you can open up views, a pull-out or pieces. But it would take a commitment on the town's part to apply, manage, follow through, and done. And I think that's probably wanting to be well organized about taking that step.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I would support, you know, I definitely would support any of it because I think many people feel that as.
Oh, it is. It's a beautiful road.
And it's a heritage and it's, you know, it's a real interest right now in places people can walk safely and that are designated and ride bikes and all those kinds of things.
No, it's in there, I can't find it. Yeah, that is, and like I said, with the work we're doing on it, personally, I think that our involvement, showing the state and anybody else, when we do get to that point of asking, geez, maybe we need a little of this, when they see that we've improved certain areas, I think that'll help too. So, I think we're on the right steps in that direction.
Thank you.
Okay, Pownell Historical Society. The Mysteries of the Three Seth Hudson's. Sunday, October 27th, down at the Solomon Light Public Library on Main Street in Pownell Village. Ray Rodriguez, I guess, will be the speaker on this. So again, Sunday, October 27th, at the Library in Pownell at 2:00 PM. And this is our letter from Pownell Bridge 42. That is on Pownell Village again, where we started work on it, and we had to do a study on it, or release information. It says, please, in written notification, if you intend to comply with your compliance with or reasons for non-compliance with the recommendation, 60 days from receipt of this letter. This was the talk we had on fixing the bridge, and we had to stop because it needed more repair. And this is stating that we are gonna do those repairs to get it that far up and then go forward again. So, we need to sign this across the board. Okay? Everybody in favor of that?
Do we have to make that a motion, or?
So we're still doing more repairs then?
Yeah, we're doing, we're repairing the abutments of it, the underpillings, which was noted that had to be done. This has to be done before we can go any further anyways.
And what was the total cost mentioned in there?
What this is, we had money, and we didn't use it all because we couldn't complete the project. So what we wanna do is kinda use some of this back into this repair, and we have to do these repairs anyways. So, it's kind of almost a no-brainer, but we have to do the dots and sign them.
Okay.
So, all on board?
Yep.
It's a motion and a second and an ayes?
Yeah.
We went through that a couple of weeks ago, it's just now it's official. I got ahead of myself because I mixed these two together, but that's under the same. This is, again, from the State of Vermont. Marjorie Skinner, and this is to do with the Amendment to the Town Highway Structures Grant on that said bridge. We need to fill out this amendment for the change of the scope of the existing grant. The town needs to include a letter, the letterhead explaining the change of the scope, and return to the office with the signatures. And that was the money that we did get for that, which has changed now because of the work process that had to be changed down there. So what it needs is the approval from this board for me to sign it. You wanna question?
No.
No, okay. We all in favor?
Aye.
Make it like ups. Please. That is our mail, except we did get a letter from our auditors, and we're always accused of not reading it. I would like to touch on that for a minute. As a lot of people know out there in television land, audiences here, we have been working Tuesdays with the Select Board, working on different areas of audits that were turned in to us, and going through different plans and different programs to improve the ability of how we work here. This particular letter says, from our auditors Shields and Baker. While we are glad that you are finally discussing our payroll overpayments and findings, we are truly disappointed on how this come about. To pay an attorney to this day almost $1,300 for expenses for paperwork that you could have had for nothing but a meeting with us, in our opinion, is ridiculous. To put an end to this, we included Auditor Shields' notes in our last package to the attorney. We did not believe at this time these notes were public record because no one in the Auditor Shields had seen them to date. These were not sent to the Attorney General or to the state police during the investigations. Since then, Mr. Holden and his office has seen them, the board and their office has seen them, anyone else you have showed has seen them. Therefore, it's our belief that all these exposures have made these notes part of public record, and they should be treated as such. We hope you will take the opportunity, take the appropriate action to retrieve the money that was given away in steps to prevent this from happening again. However, given your action in the past, we doubtful this will happen. I personally'd like to respond to that because I wasn't happy spending money to a lawyer to get these particular records delivered to this table. We had set it up with this to auditors to bring these particular information, which they said they had. They had it in front of them, they were ready to show it to us, and they'd bring it to a meeting. We have minutes stating that we wanted those particular items so we could review them, so we could make our decision, see what was found, and set up a meeting with them to come in, and it wasn't satisfactory to them, and it didn't happen. We sent them a letter again, asking them to deliver them to this table. Not to a lawyer, but to this table for our inspection, the board of selectmen. That also did not happen. It ended up in a police investigation where they were sent there, and we played the cat and mouse game with that particular item until we got them back. And that was through the legal letters, twice. We paid probably around $49, I believe it was, in mailing that the auditors spent to get them mailed to our lawyers when they could have been walked over here. We had legal letters, inexpensive to get them. I didn't like incurring them either, but this had gone on for months, we needed to put it to rest. This board needed to see what the accusations were, what proof there was, what paperwork was to follow. We couldn't go on assumptions, nor would we. These particular items that I received from our lawyer have been in our lawyer's control, his possession. No public or personal people have seen this. They have been viewed by the selectmen only and will continue to be that way. As we work toward resolving this matter, we are also, we continue to spend meetings Tuesday nights that we call a special meeting. And because of personnel matters, because that's what this is involving, we go into an executive session and we go through our findings and their findings. And we will resolve this, and we were in the process of making new town policies, work ethics for our employees, so this doesn't happen tomorrow or in the future for future boards. So, I just wanted to clear the air that this ridiculousness, I would like to see us work together, I would like to see this come to an end, but I'm not really happy to be real pleased when it's seven. Given our past, it's doubtful this will happen. So I'll quote his words. With that, I'll get off that subject for the moment. Thank you. Old Business, Timber Harvest. Our man's not here.
No, he's not gonna be able to make it. I received a telephone message from Bruce Richardson. Bruce is out of business, out of town on business, can't make the board meeting, but I was to relay that he is still working on a timber cut, but the project is not complete at this time.
Okay.
That he's still working towards it.
So, it'll be tabled till we hear from him. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Mike, on Hazardous Mitigation Plan.
Hopefully it's not hazardous.
Well, hazard, hazard, I'm sorry.
We started, we started working on a Hazard Mitigation Plan about four or five months ago, and actually, it's been held up by me at this point. Linda's been asking me to have a meeting so we can get it going, but I'm the holdup because I was working on a bunch of grant applications. But substantial part of it is written. What we need to do is identify specific actions, and obviously bring this to you and to the public for them to review and add to it, but that's where it stands at this point. There's a lot that goes into a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Plan that, a lot of background information. But the key part is, once you've identified hazards such as flooding, winter storms, and like, what are you gonna do about them, or what kinds of actions? And that's gonna require some creative thinking, and so, but at this point, I've been.
Preventive measures.
Yeah, exactly. But that helps me lead in, do you want me to go into the next subject, which is sort of?
Certainly. You are, you're under new business too, so you get the whole ball there.
Oh, I've got some stuff for you all. As you probably know, there's another round of Hazard Mitigation Grants, for which you need a Hazard Mitigation Plan to actually get the money, but you don't have to have it to apply. So, one of the things that the state was hoping that towns that are interested in applying for Hazard Mitigation Grants might focus on would be looking at properties that are prone to flooding, and that therefore might be appropriate for measures that would reduce their vulnerability, such as raising their elevation, or even buyouts. Because what else happens with those properties is they keep getting hit again and again and again. So, we did some, I actually did some analysis, and A&R did some analysis, and we came up with some little information for you. As you probably know, you have a substantial number of homes in the special flood hazard In fact, you may be one of the top 10 towns in the state in terms of their numbers. And if you look at which, which, the way this was developed is those little red areas are the special flood hazard zone as mapped by FEMA. And then the little dots are, develop something from something called the E911 database, which is basically the location of structures for emergency management purposes. So if you overlay and count the number that hit the red, you get these numbers in this little table over here. And you can see that the number that sticks out is a lot of mobile homes. In some of the mobile home parks and elsewhere. Now, where that leads is, there's a change to the flood insurance law that was passed last year. It's called the, it was called the Biggar Waters Act. I forget the name that the, that it's, once it became law, what it was actually called. But what it will do is gradually, something like 80% of properties with policies pay a, in essence, a basic, a market rate for their insurance. 20% are subsidized one way or the other. And it's going to gradually eliminate those subsidies. If you have a policy and you own a second home, over time, your policy costs will go up something like 20 or 25% a year for over four or five years until it reaches market rates. So that's a fairly big jump depending on what you owe. If you get a new policy, you may have paid $2,000 a year, now you may pay $10,000 a year. Because, again, going up to the market rates. Those properties that were quote-unquote grandfathered, in other words, they were not in a map zone, but now are in a map zone. Originally, they would have paid a lower rate, but gradually, those are gonna be raised up. The whole point, what Congress was trying to do is fill the.
The void.
Where the money comes from, because of the amount of flooding damage that happens every year, which is in the tens and sometimes hundreds of billions of dollars, when you have things like Katrina and Sandy and Irene and those kinds of storms.
Have they visited California lately? There's always stuff falling off the ledges down there and burning and falling in the ocean and stuff.
Yeah.
I just.
That's a whole different kind of disaster.
But it's still, you know, insurance somewhere along the route that's.
So there's sort of two thoughts that we've been having that we just wanted, I just wanted to sort of bounce off of you, is one, is that if there are properties that where an owner was interested in either a purchase or an elevation raising that would reduce their hazard, that would also reduce their insurance costs if they were to do that. And the other issue is, is that basically, we're not even sure how many people know that their rates are gonna go up. In some cases, in many cases, what will happen is if you can have a subsidized rate now, when you sell your home, the next owner won't get that rate. So, again, using the example of, I'm selling my house and my insurance rates are $2,000 or $3,000 now, I sell it to you, and wow, it's, and you didn't, you may not have known that. There was an article in the New York Times on Sunday that went over this a bit, and it actually went over pretty well, and it describes people, especially in the South, where they get hit by hurricanes a lot, a lot of people have flood insurance, and basically, they're finding, gee, things are gonna cost a lot. Coastal zones, coastal areas especially are real targets for this because they have very big flood areas, potential flood areas from storm surges and the like. So, what I wanna do is just make you aware of this in case there's any, you know, if there's some ways to do some outreach, especially, again, I'm sort of pointing to the mobile homes, there's probably, probably some vulnerable people there, not only from flooding, but they may not be in the best economic shape. And so, those are people who may, may, if there's some outreach and some education, there might be a way of helping them. Go ahead.
Okay, are there any plans to hold a public meeting on this where people can attend and the public can ask questions about this? And then, my second part of this question is, if somebody takes a buyout, what happens to that land? Who owns it?
The town would own it.
The town would own it.
Right. So in an elevation raise, that wouldn't be the case.
Right, on an elevation raise, right, absolutely, that would remain.
So in some cases, that's a better option if you're not interested in owning property for the town. I mean, there may be cases where acquisition might be something that would be, work for both parties, you and the landlord. Terms of the public meeting, part of what we're struggling with, myself and my counterparts in the other regional planning commissions, is there really hasn't been an outreach effort on the Biggar Waters changes. People have sort of known it's coming, but FEMA has, does not, apparently, we were, we were wondering if they wrote letters to everyone who's got a policy and let them know, and apparently, I guess they don't do that.
Isn't, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Isn't most of it happening through the banks, in that the people this affects the most?
We don't know.
Are the people who are required to have flood insurance because of their mortgages?
Right. Well, yeah, we don't know, but there's, there's, there's like a large number of people that there are only 20 insurance policies in Pownell.
That's the point.
Yeah, there are a lot of people who don't have.
Right.
Right.
So, they are going to be off the radar screen.
Exactly.
Because they may own a house and not have flood insurance.
Right.
Because their mortgage is paid off.
Right.
But when they go to sell it.
Or they may have let it lapse, and nobody let them know, yeah.
Yeah.
That can happen too.
You know, if they go to sell it.
Right.
Then the buyer's going to have a problem, and you're gonna have a problem.
Sure.
With being able to sell houses.
Also, if they get damaged in an event, and they take money from FEMA, then a normal requirement is that they then get flood insurance, so they would, might be stuck that way too.
Right. I'm really glad you're here, because this is a huge national issue.
Yeah.
That, you know, I've heard, I'm aware of, just because of what I have to be aware of. But our insurance offices hearing it, and they're hearing it mostly from people who are being impacted one by one, when they hear their rate is gonna go up by these huge amounts.
Yeah.
And we know the problem is the federal government did not reserve enough money in the past, as well as there being more floods coming up. But they're trying to, like you say, build a pool and to get out of it.
Sure.
The, like you say, that the number of insurance policies in this town is really pretty low.
Right.
But the risk is much higher than that.
Yes.
The mitigation part, it would probably be really valuable for people to understand that. There are some towns that are going through it right now, such as Woodford from Irene, and the process of what you have to do to access the federal money. And then there's the part of, if you do mitigate, it's the 75% of the value of the property is what the federal government will pay. Except unless other people decide otherwise. Except unless other people decide otherwise, you have to subtract the cost of removing the buildings that are there. So now it goes down a lot less. Now, in Irene is.
It can though, usually I think those are included in project cost, but I guess.
Well, you know, in Irene, we came back and said, we'd make people whole.
Right.
We'd get to 100%.
Right.
But the hard part for many people is even if you look at that total value because of where they are and the properties are most at risk, the lives are equally valuable. But the properties and the property owner, if you look at the total dollars they receive, they've got nowhere to go. Because the amount of dollars they end up with, they're living in a place that to them is they like. And their only option is what? To move into a place that is maybe less risky, but it also is, you know, undesirable to them.
Yeah, oh, sure.
A different standard, different standard of lifestyle.
Yeah, sure.
So, you know, I I do think this is something for the town to be, you know, really aware of and to see if there are some pieces there. And as a society, did you see what Massachusetts did two days ago?
No.
The Attorney General? They basically are going to push back on this by saying that the banks, the Attorney General put in a bill that the bank can't ask for the flood insurance to increase any more than the cost of that mortgage. And they can't require that it also cover contents and other pieces.
That's interesting.
To keep the 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 cost of the person down. Now, the person will be at more risk, they can buy more if they want. But they won't lose their mortgage. So I don't know where that'll go, but that might be something that we have to look at in Vermont.
Yeah, that is a real danger if people can't pay their mortgages because they have to pay their insurance and then you have mass, mass numbers of foreclosures. And you have empty buildings.
And if I'm not mistaken too, there's different levels of flood insurance because I have a family member that got hit with Irene. And the interesting part about that was flood insurance wouldn't cover it because it was a hurricane and personal insurance wouldn't cover it because it was a flood. So now you come into this whole ball of wax and you say, wait a minute, I have flood insurance and I have homeowner's insurance. And both of them are pointing the finger at each other saying, oh, no, this was a hurricane, we can't pay. And the other one says, oh, no, this is a flood, we can't pay. So, you know.
There's an interesting for Montreux.
How hard the governor of New Jersey pushed to have it be a tropical storm when it came on shore and not be a hurricane?
For that, for that reason.
You know, and there's actually a bill in the legislature the insurance companies are very, very unhappy about that was put in that basically says is that you can't have a storm exemption. That they can't do that. Now, by and large, is usually they get around it, but if Vermont did that, it would be ahead of any other state in doing so. So they aren't happy about that.
There's kind of a Vermont twist on that too. If you, I'm sure you, my predecessors or coworkers have talked to you about fluvial erosion hazard zones and the idea of having those zones, but which which basically you cannot develop in them because the potential for erosion. Well, if if my house is sitting on the riverbank and a storm comes and erodes it and it falls in the river, then we could argue that a flood caused that. If a storm, my my house doesn't fall until three months later, maybe that didn't happen from a flood and therefore flood insurance wouldn't cover me.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
So in other words, people, people in that zone are very vulnerable because they can't get any insurance that will cover their loss.
A lot of fine lines.
Because the house, the people who sell their house insurance will say, well, that was a flood. And people get the flood insurance though, that was erosion. And so that's one of the reasons we've been pushing to say, we realize it's, it may seem extreme, but if you really try to have to try to keep people out of that zone, so because they will in the long term not have any protection, any financial protection. First time I ever went to California, a long time ago, I I got to stay in a place called Lucadia. And I went down the steps to the beach, went to jog down the beach, there was a house sitting in it. Because the cliffs.
Sure. Happened to move.
Sort of had to jog around it.
We have, with our zoning a few years back, lightly touched into this because of a couple of our courts. And with our new stipulations on when a mobile home is replaced, that it had to become on a cement foundation now, a slab, which has in all purposes put gravel and a slab down. So the irony is we have, anytime they're removed, they are actually coming back higher. So it's, you know, it has helped.
Yeah. Well, this is an opportunity for the owners to get some money to help with that. I mean, I wanted to answer your question about the public meeting. And the reason I'm here doing this is because the grant application is due the middle of November. Apparently DEC is is putting, trying to put together some public outreach on the insurance changes, but that's slowly moving along and we didn't want to wait until they did that. We'd be glad to come to the town and tell you what we can. I mean, we're planners and biologists and people, we're not insurance agents, so we'll do the best we can. But but and we can get Ned Swanberg from, I'm sure you've met, who knows a lot about this stuff to come down and discuss. We'd be glad to do that, but we didn't want to, you know, we wanted to get kind of get to you as soon as possible. Plus, we want to let start with you and not just.
Right, no, and I and I totally appreciate that and understand that, but.
But yeah, in terms of doing that kind of outreach.
I mean, it's disastrous because the average person, unless you're a lawyer or have many degrees of education in insurance, you can't understand the policies to start with.
I know they're.
I mean, it's it's you could read one and still not come out with what you got when you're done.
I remember a couple of years ago, do you remember that earthquake we had that shook up the Washington? Also, I pulled out my salt and house insurance, my cover for earthquakes. I'm covered for volcanoes. I'm not covered for earthquakes.
Oh, I was covered under earthquakes.
Were you?
You know what the deductible was? $30,000. That was your deductible.
I was kind of surprised in the east, it wouldn't just be like to throw it in, I could see it in California.
Amazing.
At any rate, yeah, you don't know what you're not covered for until you it hits you and you realize you're not covered for. Now, the other thing, just to tie into what you were saying, is the the state does match the 25% they basically, at this point, they put up, usually put up half of the of the 25% or 12 and a half percent, then the town or local jurisdiction puts up the other half. There's some new rules that are coming out that's going to play with that a little bit. And you're actually, we hope you will be in good shape. If you have an emergency operations plan, which you do, you have a hazard mitigation plan and you've adopted town, the the state road and road standards, which you've done, then you'll continue to get the the half of the 12.5%. If you were not to do that, miss one of those, you'd only get seven and a half percent. If you adopt more stringent flood control regulations, then you can get up to 17 and a half percent. We don't have anybody in that realm yet. But doing a hazard mitigation plan will will help you in terms of saving some money if you have those kinds of damages again and you're trying to match the FEMA money. And that will go into effect in 2015 or 14. That's the E Raf rules, the.
Yeah, A and R.
Yeah.
Those rules.
Yeah. So I wanted to make you, there's a lot of stuff going on.
It's good information.
Actually, I have to write up on that if you want to.
With with all the little red spots we see on this particular sheet, which most of us that live here obviously realize these areas and know the particular ones, I do have to admit during our flood event, we were extremely fortunate.
I understand, yeah.
Because we, that was a serious flood event and we did dodge a very serious bullet on that. Not to say it couldn't happen, but you know, at least with that kind of event, we had what would you call it, a rehearsal on what could have been, saw the effects a little bit.
Well, it's like wearing your seatbelt, you know. Those are the rules I was just telling you about. So my main purpose in here was just to give you the the brief overview of of this. Get you thinking about it and we're willing to help you any way we can. I know that if you're interested in, or you have a way to reach out to some of these people in terms of they're applying for a hazard mitigation plan grants, we could help them with that. It's it's or at least getting information.
How about park owners? Any responsibility on the landowners themselves?
You know, I don't, as I understand, they own the land and people generally own their their.
Right.
That's the way it works. So I think what would happen, of course, I don't know what their contractual relationship is. I don't know what that would entail, whether they're supposed to provide a certain level service or safety. I assume they're supposed to maintain the roads and things. I I don't know, I'm not familiar with that.
I mean, you know.
Probably the way the way it might work is if there was a, if there was a you know, it's kind of interesting question of who would, if they, if if the park owners own the pad and you were to elevate the structure, who would get the money to do that? Would it be the owner of the structure or the pad? Because you would think that once you elevated it, if they decide to move their mobile home.
Nobody's going to take the pad with them.
Right, you'd leave, you'd elevate it such a way that the next mobile home could also be elevated because otherwise you wouldn't, you'd still have the same problem next time. So you'd want to make it such that it went with the land rather than the mobile home.
Kind of where that, like I said, that was where I was going with that is we've tried to put that into our zoning.
Right, yeah.
So new occupancy, that's how you have to do.
Sure.
It's kind of closing the door, everything after everything's out, but at least it's something. But where I'm coming from is like a couple of these parks.
It would seem reasonable to have them apply if they wanted to for a series of a number of pads and then they would help to pay the matching cost because it would be a benefit to their park.
Right.
Even though the money would run through the town.
It's an asset when they're done, yeah.
Pay the the 20% if they're willing.
My point was where in these two particular parks, I'm thinking of there's drainage issues. And one has been through the select board doing a site visit before two different storms that we had warning of. And actually, for lack of a better word, a hands-on situation with the park owner stating, this has to be cleaned. We have drainage stitches around here that are debris filled, there's problems. And with anything like a river or any culvert or anything plugged, you're going to have an issue, especially when you're on old land to start with. This sort of maintenance that we did through this board took forth and went down and did a site visit before the storms. We met at the firehouse, emergency manager, and we discussed this and we went out and we read the riot ex through these places and had this done. And knock on wood, I got to believe this was one of our major assets that saved us from issues down in these particular places. You know, my feeling is it's the owner of the properties liability, responsibility.
Sure.
To always have this maintained because so many people are at risk.
Sure.
And we were in a flood zone to start with there, so you're one against already. And if you do anything to deter that in any way, now you're either further behind. And this, this has been, knock on wood. Like I said, this last storm, that's an area that should have been hurt and it didn't. And that that was pretty impressive. So I just, I'd like to see the landowners and some of these that actually get income out of it. And it is a business to be responsible for certain things and the insurance, they've got to carry some sort of land insurance on themselves, liabilities.
Probably, yeah.
These park owners or anybody, I mean, there has to be a certain liability. And boy, I'd like to see FEMA or somebody step into this part and say, okay, you know, you need to step up a little bit. Instead of the poor guy that's just making it barely living in what he can afford to live in.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
And not really having the control over the rest around him.
Yeah, and trying to just live their peaceful life.
Yep.
But it is a, it is, I mean, again, the reason we we wanted to reach out to you is that you have a lot of vulnerable people, as you know.
And information is the knowledge that's needed, so.
And it's probably, it's really short term on this grant, but I wanted to make sure you're aware and and we can definitely work with you in terms of more outreach, but we, there's no way we'd have it done between now and November 18th, so. You're going to want to wait till then.
Very good. Yes.
One thing occurs to me is that it's probably not, is the, you know, the town's in the middle of this town plan.
Yes.
And it seemed to me that it would, this is something that the planning commissions work and designing the plan would want to be in tune with. And I'm not sure that the regional commission, you must know that they're doing their town plan and what that.
We we planned this beforehand, by the way, because one of the other things that the the town plan has to have is a flood resiliency section, that's a new requirement. And the legislature passed that as a requirement. There wasn't really crystal clarity as to what that meant. We're working on what that will mean. But it really should, the plan should really identify flood prone areas as it probably does, but also identify ways that would ameliorate any any potential flood damage and which can include, just like we've talked about, acquisition, elevation raising, doing river protection so that water has places to move so that it can, you know, in other words, let's say you may want to protect farmland to make sure it remains remains in a place that can store water when there's there's big floods. There may be lots of actions like that and that, those should be identified in the in the town plan.
The racetrack filled up with water, it's upstream of the Main Street Bridge. Right to the railroad tracks, as you well know. So if all that water, you know, tried to go through there without spreading out and slowing down, you'd probably have a different discussion right now about the Main Street Bridge than the one you just had.
Yep. I got one thing I'd like to ask.
Sure.
I'd like somebody to answer. How far does the government have to go? I mean, I may sound harsh or whatever, but you know what? Some of these places were bought for the reason they were bought, because they were bought for no money. And now you're going to take the other citizens who bought the place that was safe and everything else, and now they got to chip in, the town, the state, it's all taxes. We all pay. I mean, how far does this big brother obligation go, folks? I mean, it doesn't even make any sense to me. If I bought a place and it was in a flood spot, you know, I'd feel responsible. You know what, I have to take care of it. That's my house, not nobody else's. I would come here and maybe ask for a little tax reduction, but that would be it. I wouldn't be here saying, wow, look at now, the town's going to pay 7,500, the state's going to pay 17,000 and the feds will pay 75. I mean, where does this money come from, folks?
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. Yeah, I think I think the thinking is that when people get damaged, we're going to help them one way or the other. We're not, you know, in other words, you're right, they built there, but we're going to help them. And if we could get them to relocate elsewhere, once we did that, we wouldn't have to help them again and again and again. It's it's.
That's fine. I agree with that 100%.
It's basically trying to save money.
If we can do that, but as far as saying to these people, I mean, I'm I'm not a, I'm probably as charitable as anybody, but I can't believe that we have to sponsor things that are going in the wrong direction. We should have plans, you can't build there, period.
That's, that's right.
We should have that.
I totally.
Secondly, you know, like I live in a town down there that was polluted by an industry years ago. And the place stunk. People flocked in there. Why? Property went for nothing. Okay?
Yeah.
Now, you know, I mean, come on, you you got the thing for nothing.
Yeah.
You know, you you bought the property and now, of course, you want me to step up or anybody else that's living on a hill and they got a quarter million dollar house or something. Well, I got to step up and pay more taxes so that you can be made whole. I mean, I I just don't like this this state and federal government getting involved with every little thing that we do. I mean, I'm going on a rant here, but this is kind of ridiculous. If we could do something, you know, if there's something in the river, we clean it up a little bit, fine, I'm all for that.
If we can't get in the river.
Maintain our bridges or we got to do this or we got to do something. I'm all for that. But as far as protecting every Tom, Dick and Harry from something, and they did this on their own volition, nobody forced them in there. And and they don't even want to buy health, I mean, flood insurance. I talked to some people that were, got flooded out down the Spruce's down there in Rimstown. And I said, did you ever hear of flood insurance? Do you know how much that costs?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, what does it cost the rest of the residents?
Yeah.
When we make you whole? That's enough, that's my political speech.
Yeah, no, it's it's a good point.
It's a hard situation.
It's just an issue of ultimately, we all, we whatever the solution is, we all end up paying for that. It's just an issue of ultimately, we all, we, whatever the solution is, we all end up paying for that, those kinds of mistakes that these people make one way or the other. And if there's a way for us to save money, however that works, whether it's the government does it or somebody else does it, that's really the point, is try to make it, make it so we're not, because one way or the other, we're going to help those people. We haven't gotten to the point where we're just going to let them wash down the river, so.
But I I do agree with Ronnie's point is is the fact that, you know, if a house has significant damage, I don't care if it's a mobile home or a house, if a property has significant damage, why do we let them continue to go back and build there when it should be? That if the federal government wants to do anything, buy the thing, make it into a piece of property, plant trees on it and say, can't build there. It's it's like, you know, the coast of New Jersey getting ravaged. They're going to put those houses right back on the ocean again and, you know, it just keeps happening over and over and over.
Yeah, it's sort of.
Prime real estate.
Endlessly frustrating to watch TV and say, yeah, we're going to rebuild because we're tough and all that stuff. And it's like.
Prime real estate, bottom line.
Yeah, they're going to rebuild because somebody else is paying for it.
Yeah.
You know, if this was back forty, fifty years ago, that was a young fellow, they didn't have none of this stuff. They got flooded too bad, fix it or move out.
I don't know if you heard the story of the people that they built dunes to stabilize the beach. And and that blocked someone's view, so they sued the state because it was blocking their view, it was like, because they want the.
Incredible, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of, there's some major hoods about there.
Called prime real estate. All right, so this, in my understanding, it may be the planning and stuff doesn't have this, any of this, they shouldn't have some of this information, someone playing with their town plan, we can have a copy made for them.
Okay, yeah, in fact, I have some information on the flood resilience aspect, too. You can give that to them as well. We can come talk to the planning commission if you'd like.
That would be, I think.
Thank you.
Probably a good move.
Slowly working on their plan and hadn't made much progress.
Yeah, that that mic would probably be the best.
Okay, we could try to do that.
Just to set that up and have a hands-on with them, which is working into what they're doing.
You can do that.
Okay, appreciate that.
Have you, have you sent out the email on the household hazardous waste event? Did HAP get to that?
I did.
Oh, great.
About yesterday.
That's next Saturday.
Yes.
Yeah, I get that.
Great, we had one in Dorset and it went very well.
That'll be the twentieth then.
Uh, no, it's the twenty-sixth. Twenty-sixth.
Is that also full report, fully out?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're finished.
The rest are updating people on Pick Reed Point versus Casella issue.
Oh, God, it changes every fifteen seconds.
Just very briefly, it's all in flux, like we said.
Yeah, the.
For e-waste, this is e-waste.
E-waste was being taken taken by the Northeast Recycling, I forget what the RA stands for, but they had hired a, they subtracted with Goodpoint, which actually took the material. And they were in negotiation with A and R to re to renew a contract. Somehow negotiations broke down, the second highest bidder was Casella and the state said, oh, we're hiring Casella. And Goodpoint and and NRA took the state to court and there was an injunction, Goodpoint was back. Now, injunction went away and Casella's back, but now Goodpoint now has an alternative plan and they may be back themselves. So I where I've been bouncing around is the Port Dorset School is having an e-waste event this Saturday. And they had all set, had everything set up with Goodpoint, and then this happened and they were like, who are you supposed to talk to with Casella? And Casella was not in any position, they weren't ready. Now Goodpoint's back and the schools finally said, look, we're just going to go with Goodpoint because Goodpoint has said to them, we will take it. We'll pay you, we'll deal with the risk, but who knows what's going to happen at, so at this point, and since you just opened up your facility for e-waste.
Right.
Perhaps in a bit of a, helping in a bit of a bind, too, because.
From being there, oh, and it's on you over there the other day, it's in transition.
Yeah.
And that HAP isn't quite sure of where to firm up. Who is going to be doing the pickups with which one and the dust needs to settle.
Right.
And I think he's determined which one might be in terms of dollars slightly more favorable, but he knows that's ruled by however this decision comes down.
Yep. Yeah, it's a very unusual situation, we're not really sure what's going on. Good Goodpoint has done a very good job, everybody's been happy with them. Casella's a big country, company, I'm sure they could, big company, I'm sure they can do well. But why this is, you know, not working out very very well. Basically, Goodpoint is, you know, they've argued that they've done well, they're a Vermont company, they're a family company, and they want to stay in business, so they're.
It's unfortunate.
Yeah.
The big world out there.
It is a big one, yeah. Okay, well, listen, thanks for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike, we appreciate it. Okay, guys, other than not having a meeting the thirty-first, we have a sewer board meeting next week at our sewer facility. Anything else before the board before we take a motion?
Just want to remind people on paying their taxes coming up.
Okay.
What's the date again, Linda?
November twelfth.
November twelfth, taxes are due, be prepared.
Yep, and you have an open house down at the library this Sunday and with that.
In their journey.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.